All right, we're gonna get started. Welcome everybody to session three of our Serving in God's Mission Bible Study. I just wanna make a quick comment about next Sunday, we are not going to do Bible study. We're still gonna have, we'll probably just do some prayer time, some encouraging time, sharing what's going on with life. The kids are out of Friends on next Sunday, so I just wanna make sure because, you know, we have some parents who will be out there and not able to be here, so we'll just take a break from this series next week only, all right? But still come back here next Sunday, we'll just do something different, all right? All right, let's begin with word prayer. Lord, we thank you so much for this awesome day. Thank you so much for the time and worship today, a reminder for us of who we are in you, and again especially, Lord, a reminder of the wonderful blessing of our school at Dashar Lutheran School. And Lord, as we talk about our congregation, the shape of the body of Christ here specifically at St. Peter Lutheran in Dashar, Nebraska, Lord, we know that Dashar Lutheran School is a part of that, and we are so blessed by that. And I pray that you would help us to continue to see, Lord, discover other gifts, other blessings that you have given to us in people, in resources, and just opportunities that you lay before us. So bless our time now today as we have this time of study, bless our discussion, may it be fruitful, and may it just be encouraging as we continue to seek your will, your plan of bringing the good news of the gospel to others in our community. We praise in Jesus' name, amen. All right, again, just a reminder, if you do miss a session again, or you're unable to be here, definitely go back and watch the video when it's uploaded, the series, the papers are on the website, on our website, so you can go to our website, go to the tab that has events, the event tab, it should have Bible Study, Serving God's Mission Bible Study, click on that, you can download the Bible study sheets and just fill them out, all right? So again, if you miss next Sunday, it's fine, because we won't be doing those, all right? But in the future, okay? Or if you wanna go back and watch the videos, you're like, oh, I remember somebody said something awesome, and I didn't write it down, I can't remember it fully, all right? Go back and watch it then as well. All right, today, we are session three, and we're gonna look at first article gifts that God has given to us. Again, I'm just gonna read through this, and then we'll have some discussion time. When we consider the shape of the body of our congregation in terms of the people who belong to it, the financial resources available to it, our location, our community, the property we own, the equipment we have, and the other resources at our disposal, we're considering our first article gifts. First article gifts are the gifts that God has given to us that fall under the first article of the Apostles' Creed. They include everything that God has entrusted to us apart from word and sacrament. These gifts are described in Martin Luther's explanation of the first article found in the Small Catechism. First article is, "I believe in God, the Father Almighty, Maker of heaven and earth." What does this mean? "I believe that God has made me and all creatures, that he has given me my body and soul, eyes, ears, and all my members, my reason and all my senses, and still takes care of them. He also gives me clothing and shoes, food and drink, house and home, wife and children, land, animals, and all I have. He richly and daily provides me with all that I need to support this body and life. He defends me against all danger, and guards and protects me from all evil. All this he does only out of fatherly divine goodness and mercy, without any merit or worthiness in me. For all this, it is my duty to thank and praise, serve and obey him." This is most certainly true. Notice the variety of things that Luther includes in his list of God's first article gifts. The list includes everything from our bodies to our clothing to the people in our lives. As extensive as this list is, Luther shows the full extent of God's gracious giving by summing up his first article gifts as, "All that I need to support this body and life." The gifts that God gives to us individually and collectively are given for his purposes. We should find great joy in the gifts that we have been given, and find our purpose for life in making good use of God's gifts, to respond in love to the giver of these things, and to share his love with our neighbors. But sin has a way of distorting our view of God's gifts. Rather than being elated over God's choice of gifts for us, we are often dissatisfied with God as a giver. Luther observed, "This is the universal bane of our nature, that we are not satisfied with God's gifts, but abuse them, and thus mock their donor and creator. The purpose for which God gives us good health, wife, children, and property is not that we might offend him by means of these gifts, but that we might recognize his mercy and give thanks to him. For this reason, he has granted us the enjoyment, and as it were, the rule of almost all the creatures. But how few are those who do this? Do not almost all of us live in the most shocking abuse of the gifts of God? Perhaps the most shocking abuse of the gifts of God is our failure to make use of them to carry out his mission as the body of Christ, in the place, at the time, and with the people of his choosing. Yet in most cases, this is more a matter of neglect or fear than of intentional abuse of God's gifts. Strategic planning involves assessing the shape of the body, taking stock of the gifts that God has given to our congregation, and working together to understand and respond to God's purpose for us. Strategic planning is both a first article gift and an effective way of making good use of first article gifts. By other first article gifts, strategic planning can be abused, but when we use it properly, strategic planning can help us carry out the work that the Lord has entrusted to us as a congregation." All right, before we go and have small group discussion, I wanna just read Proverbs 16 1 to 4, which is on the bottom right part of that backside. Solomon writes these words, "The plans of the heart belong to man, but the answer of the tongue is from the Lord. All the ways of a man are pure in his own eyes, but the Lord weighs the spirit. Commit your work to the Lord, and your plans will be established. The Lord has made everything for its purpose, even the wicked, for the day of trouble." All right, so I wanna take some time at your tables and begin with question 3A, according to Luther's explanation, why does God give us first article gifts? Then get in your discussion, and I'll move you ahead in just a couple moments. Okay, if you're done, move on to letter B. Don't overthink it either. The first two, don't overthink, okay? Go back to Luther's explanation, that might help. There can't be other answers, but think of what he says in there as well. If you're done with, you can go on to D, if you're still talking on some previous ones, totally fine, but if you're done, you can head on to letter D. Okay, Brad? What year did Luther write this? 16?
Uh, fifteen, uh, let's see, fifteen, uh...
That's too early, isn't it?
Fifteen seventeen was the, um, the nails and what's the...
Yeah, ninety-five.
Yeah, 'cause we had, back in twenty seventeen, it was the five-hundredth anniversary, so, So, yeah, probably, I don't know, when he wrote the text, probably fifteen-twenty, somewhere in there, so, yeah.
Yeah, if you haven't gone to D yet, definitely spend a few moments. Taken about a minute or so, and you can finalize your discussion, then we'll have some large group.
I frankly don't understand how those two tie together in verse one of Proverbs. Plans of the heart belong to man, but the answer of the tongue is from the Lord. Like speaking?
Yeah, that is a little...
Well, I, I... I mean, I guess I was hoping that the plans on my heart would put their by the Lord. But then my answer, I understand controlling your tongue and all that, and the tongue can do a lot of damage, but I don't see how those two actually fit in the same sense. Answer to what? To the plans in our heart?
All right, if you wanna wrap up your conversations, we'll kind of bring back to the large group, kinda walk through these. All right, let's look at 3A as we get going here. According to Luther's explanation, why does God give us first article gifts? Why does he give them to us?
He loves us.
He loves us, okay?
So we can survive.
So we can survive?
That's a good point.
Okay. What is some language that Luther uses? "All this he does..."
So we know we're sinners.
Okay?
We have this because of grace.
Yes, we do. So, "all this he does only out of..."
Fatherly.
"...fatherly divine goodness and mercy, without any merit or worthiness in me." So, we get it, whether we're good or not, because God is gracious, and God is good, and God is merciful. We get it because God is good, all right? I mean, we think of Jesus, the reign comes on the just and the unjust, all right? I mean, God takes care of people, whether we deserve it or not, and we know because of sin, we don't deserve it. He's gracious, he's good, that's who he is. All right, let's go to letter B. According to Luther's explanation, what are we to do with our first article gifts?
Thank, praise, serve, and obey him.
All right? For all this, for all God has done for me, all the goodness he's done, for all this, it is my duty, okay? We hear the word duty, and sometimes we have a negative connotation, all right? But that's not really what Luther's talking about. Hey, for all that God has done for me, this is how I respond. I thank and I praise him, I serve and obey him. God is good, we respond. Now, that can happen in obviously lots of different ways, okay? We can praise God through song, we can praise him with doing good works, we can praise him by just thinking about him, and thinking about how awesome and powerful he is, we can praise him by just enjoying his amazing creation, okay? It happens in different ways.
Sharing him with others.
Sharing him with others, yeah, all right? Thanking him, praising him, obviously serving him happens in different ways, and then we obey him in our lives. We do what he wants us to do, out of gratitude for all that he's done for us, which we don't deserve. All right, let's go to letter C. Of the first article gifts listed in Luther's explanation, which are related to strategic Some of the things that Luther mentions, what would, what would be active and involved in strategic planning?
Our reasoning.
Our reason, okay? God has given you a brain, correct? And all God's people said, amen.
Amen.
God's given you a brain. He's created you with a brain to think, to ponder, to process, you have a reason, so strategic planning definitely involves the brain, okay? And reasoning, and thinking about things, pondering things, okay? What else? Strategic planning, what other first article gifts might be related to strategic planning?
Talents.
Talents, okay? Okay, so other blessings, financial, okay?
Time, we have a time.
Time, absolutely. How about your eyes? Think about your eyes for a moment, okay? Strategic planning might involve your eyes, you see the community. What does my community look like, okay? Who has got placed in my community, okay? Maybe God has placed a lot of, I mean, I'm not saying this is Dashar, but imagine if God had placed a bunch of immigrants in our community. That would hopefully affect how we look at ministry and strategic planning. Oh, God has sent a lot of people to our community. Maybe we should strategic plan to reach the immigrants that God has moved here to bring the gospel to them, okay? If God has brought a lot of people who are dealing with poverty, maybe strategic planning is looking at social ministry, and how we can build that out to bring the gospel to So our eyes, we look at the community, what does it look like? Who is God bringing here, okay? That helps in our strategic planning. Any other, other first article gifts, do you think? All right, let's go to letter D then. What proper use of strategic planning and what abuse of strategic planning are addressed in Proverbs 16 1 to 4? How about proper use of strategic planning? Commit your work to the Lord, all right? We talked about this a couple weeks ago. If we are trying to do strategic planning, and it's our planning, instead of the Lord's planning, it's not going anywhere, okay? So proper use is continuing to commit it, surrender it, pray about it, seek the Lord's will about it, seek his word about it. That's proper use. God, we want these plans to be your plans, not our plans. Other things of proper use, anything else on proper use? How about abuse of strategic planning from these verses?
When we do it for any other reason.
When we do it for any other reason, okay? What might a reason be?
To benefit yourself.
Okay.
To look more important, or take on a role and think it makes you in charge.
Okay?
Better.
All right, very good. We're trying to get the praise and the glory of serving in church and not make sure Christ gets the praise and the glory, okay? Other abuses of strategic planning based on these verses? We might come into planning with our own agenda, okay? "The plans of the heart belong to man." If we come into this process with our own, excuse me, our own agenda, and I'm gonna make sure I do everything to get my way, and I'm gonna be honest this morning, like, as we go into this process, especially in the January, like, I need to do that, like, because obviously it's easy for me as the pastor to say, well, I want what I want, all right? And I gotta come with humility, and I gotta come, I don't want, it's not about my agenda, it's about the Lord's plan, the Lord's agenda, what he wants. And so we've all gotta come to this process of strategic planning of, God, not my will, your will be done. And there are gonna be times, I'm guessing, through this process where we're gonna disagree, well, I think it's this, or I think that, and we may have to go back and say, all right, we're gonna take a week or two, and we're just gonna pray, and we're gonna see where the Lord leads us, okay? But if we come with an agenda, we're going to come with the plans of the heart that belong Other abuses that you think, based on these verses? Any questions on these verses?
I do on Robert.
Yes.
How does the first statement tie in with the second statement? The answer of the tongue is from the Lord. How you respond to someone without the plans?
Uh, it's really the Lord's tongue.
Oh, okay, that makes...
Or how we respond, all right? How we respond, all right? If we come in with our own agenda, but it's more about how we respond.
Okay.
The Lord speaks how we're going to respond, okay? If you read in the NIV version, it says, "To man belongs the plans of the heart, but from the Lord comes the reply of the tongue." Okay, so maybe that helps.
That helps a lot.
Explaining.
It's the Lord's tongue.
Yes.
Not our tongue.
And if you look at verse two, again, ESV maybe doesn't bring it out, all right? Verse two, "The Lord weighs the spirit," he's talking about motives, okay? What are your motives? What's your focus? Is it your own agenda, is your own plans, is it what you want, or is it about what the Lord wants, okay? And we've got, it is really, really important as we go through this process to continue to focus on that. God, we want these to be your plans. You've given us a brain, you've given us our eyes and our ears and our reason and our senses, we wanna be, use them properly, we wanna use them for your glory as we go through this strategic planning, but in the end, we want to use them for God's plans, not our plans. Well, hopefully our plans align with God's plans, all right? But coming with as much of a blank slate and without an agenda as possible, that's the goal as we go through this. All right, any final thoughts or comments today? Again, a little, maybe less discussion, maybe a little quicker answers today from some... of our questions. Again, we are, these are just blocks that are building on top of each other as we go through those, okay? So we're trying to lay the foundation, one block after another, for the strategic planning through looking to see where God is leading us as we go through this process to follow his plan. All right, again, next week, we will not have, we will have Bible study, it will not be this Bible study, we'll do something just back here, so we'll pick up with the serving of God's mission study two weeks from today, okay? All right, let's close in prayer. Father God, we thank you so much for this time we've had together, Lord. And Lord, indeed, as we go through this process, you have shaped this body here at St. Peter Lutheran Deschler in a certain way, and Lord, we want to see and learn more about how you have shaped this body so we can be a blessing to the community, so we can bring the message of the gospel to others in our lives. Help us to see clearly how we can keep doing that, Lord God. Lord, we ask your blessing on the rest of this day. Help us to keep seeking you, following you, and Lord, just, just reaching out in love to the people around us. We pray this in Jesus' name, amen. All right, have a great day.